This is the December 8th, 2022 meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda today is the secretary's report from November 15th. Does anybody have any questions or clarifications to those minutes? Okay, I need to make a motion.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving along to the budget. So you have a to-date budget, and I think the expenditures are expected for the midway point, or almost the midway point of the fiscal year. The only thing that's really any different from the last time we met is that I was able to update the telephone line because I had the October reconciliation form, so the telephone bills are reflected through October. Other than that, unless you have any questions, it's pretty straightforward. Anybody have anything? Everybody's good? All right, do you need a motion?
Make a motion to accept the expense budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. New business is the update to the circulation policy. So going fine-free is a lot of work, because there's a lot of backend work to that. And so I've been working with sales, and one of the things I quickly realized after our last meeting was that we would need to revise the circulation policy a little bit to remove things about fines. So I sent you a revised version. I've added a couple of things since then, so I'll go through that. But from the first section in Table A, the library material loan period and late fees, we would obviously be removing end late fees from that, so I'd strike that out. And then also, I would remove the fine chart completely. Except for, the only thing that's on this list that will still have fines is museum passes, so even though I crossed that out in the draft, because I was just doing like a mass strike-through, I would still keep the word "varies" there. Actually, what I would probably do in the loan period column, because I would rather take out the fines column altogether now that I'm thinking this through, so I think under loan period, where it says "varies," I would put like an asterisk and then say that fines vary depending on paths, because that is what determines the fines, is they're all, they have different charges depending on how many days we loan them out for. So if that's okay with you, I'll do an asterisk, and then I'll say fines depend on paths. And then, you know, they can always find that out from us. We do have that printed, and when they take a pass out, it's printed on the pass packet, so the information is there. And then the next change would come under D, renewing materials. We'd leave it the same, except that I would add in how many times items can be renewed, which is something we hadn't included originally. It doesn't really have to do with going fine-free. It's just something I thought was appropriate to add in, so we would add in a line, if you're okay with it, that says all physical material borrowed from the Acushnet Public Library can be renewed two times, with the exception of museum passes and items categorized in our library of things, i.e. laptops and telescope, which can't be renewed at all. So that sentence, I think, would cover that, but then it also explains how many times items can be renewed. And along those lines, a couple of our items currently can only be renewed one time, like our DVDs can only be renewed, they have a seven-day loan and one renewal. But to be consistent, so that we can just eas, staff can easily tell patrons that anything that is eligible for renewal can renew two times, and I would also like to update our, what they call the circulation map, and have DVDs be a seven-day loan with two renewals, so that everything is two renewals, and just make it nice and easy for the patrons and for the staff to remember. And that doesn't fall into this policy, it's just something that goes along. So unless you really didn't want to do that, then we'll make that change to the circ map, and then the language will be in the policy. Everything is twice.
It makes sense to do it that way.
Good, yeah. The more that I, like, was just like going through it, the more, I was even considering like having DVDs circulate for two weeks, but I, a lot of libraries are not doing that, except for with sets, which we already do with sets. And I really don't want to deviate too much from what other libraries are doing, because I don't want it to become something that, you know, they go to another library and say, "Oh, but Acushnet does it for two weeks, and why don't you?" And I would rather stay consistent with neighboring libraries as much as possible, but the two renewals, I don't think is out of the norm at all, so that'll be great, also. Make it nice and easy. And then, any questions about that, so? Nope, okay. So then in Section E, paying fines, we would add in the line, effective 12/21/2022, and it might be before that, but that's the date we're using. You will no longer be charged overdue fines for most material in the Acushnet Public Library's collection. Fines will still be assessed on museum passes and items categorized in our library of findings, i.e. laptops and telescope. Fines vary by item. After 12/21/2022, you will still be responsible for fines if you borrowed material directly from a library that charges fines. It's really important. That's gonna be a real, like, the staff and I are having a meeting next week to really like outline this, and I think we're gonna have to potentially outline that with some of our patrons who we know use multiple libraries in the area, because we may still see fines on their accounts pop up, but it'll be from items that they've borrowed from another library, not from ours. So we just want to put that out there and make it real clear to people that if they're using another library, which is great if they are, but if they are, they may still be, you know, subject to fines. So it's by the, where you're borrowing the item. So like when we loan out items that belong to New Bedford, or for Haven, or Dartmouth, they won't be charged fines because they borrowed them here.
From here.
But if they physically go to New Bedford or Dartmouth, then they'll be charged fines. So that's the difference.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, it's a little.
I had a question about that.
I did too, initially, and I needed it to be clarified. Right, so if they've placed, if we've placed a hold for a patron, or the patron themselves has placed a hold on an item that survived from another library, but they're borrowing it here, they follow our loan rules. So, and then they will, if, no matter where they return the item, it will still, won't generate fines because they borrowed it here, and our loan rule was triggered during the borrowing process.
That would be a nightmare to keep track of.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So, I mean, it'll be a little bumpy at first, I'm sure, you know, which is, I've talked to a variety of libraries, and some of them have tried to dip, that have gone fine-free, have tried to downplay it, and then kind of just like give a surprise to the patrons when they come to the desk. But I would like a little bit of a guide, just in case there's a problem, because then the staff will have something to refer to, I'll have something to refer to, and then we can, you know, inform the patron, so. Yeah, so that's, but then sometimes you worry that you're giving too much, like, am I just like really pounding it in? And then another area that I've made a change, which is not on what you have, is in Section F for the lost damaged items, because in thinking about this, again, it's gonna be really important that we emphasize that if someone loses an item or damages an item, they will still be charged for that, to replace the item. So even though we're not charging late fees, there will, there may, you know, if you lose something, you're still responsible for that. So, I, after you will be charged for lost damaged items, I'm adding in, or if you approve it, I'm adding in, items borrowed from the Acushnet Public Library will be considered lost when past due by 60 days. So that will be, right now, they have 90 days to be past due, but we're gonna bump it down to 60 days, if that's okay. It's still two months beyond the due date to find an item, and if, you know, we would work with it on a case-by-case basis also. But again, it's items borrowed from the Acushnet Public Library will be considered lost when past due by 60 days. And then we'll go on to say you will be charged for a replacement. And then, please contact the library for pricing. And then, the new paragraph would start with, about the damaged section that currently exists, so that language would stay the same. But then that will also, we don't, we don't have it written anywhere here right now for patrons to see that says that they are given a 90-day period from the due date before they're charged for lost fees. So putting it, I think, in writing again is important, because they will get, after 60 days, they will get that generated notice from the network saying that this is the replacement cost for whatever you've lost. And maybe they haven't lost it, maybe they just haven't gotten back here, and then that notice usually reminds them that it's time to get back.
It's a good idea.
So, um, so those are, oh, and then the other change, this has nothing to do with late fees or borrowing policies, but there is a section, Section H on homebound delivery. I just removed the last line because it's not really pertinent, since right before COVID, and it's staff that does it now, so I, the library staff that does it, so I just removed that line for, just while I was in there.
Makes sense.
So unless you have any questions about that, or something you don't agree with, and if you don't agree with something, it's fine, and we can talk about that.
No, I think it's good, I think the consistency is good, I think the renewals on the DVD, I think that's good, twice, and, you know, I mean, most people can watch a movie in that much time anyway. It's not like reading a book.
Right, right.
But, no, I think it's, I think it's good. Does anyone else have any, anything to add? Comments, questions? All right, then, let's, do you need a motion? Yep?
Make a motion that the changes to the circulation policy as described just recently be accepted.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Great, thanks, everyone. And lastly, we have the director's report. So to start with the report, I just wanted to point out that, in fact, COVID was talking about fine-free, that has nothing to do with the circulation policy, but just to point out, patrons will still get overdue notices, so first of all, they still will have due dates when they're borrowing items. The expectation will be that they will return the items by the due dates, and I think we trust our patrons enough to do that without the fines coming into play. So there will still be due dates. They will get overdue notices the same way they do now, so it's a 17-day mark, 14-day mark, and it's currently a 56-day mark, but since they'll get the lost notice at 60 days, we're probably gonna ask the network to bump the over, the last overdue notice to 28 days. So these 7, 14, 28 overdue notices, and then one month later, they'll get their lost notice. So just so you all are aware of how that's going to work, I wanted to make sure I put that out there. And, you know, if something we find doesn't work, if the 60 days is too much time, or not enough time, we can certainly go back and revise it again, if not, sentence down. So any changes we make, or adjustments that are made, you know, they'll be able to be modified. That's it. Tomorrow, hopefully, we'll be sending out an e-newsletter that will have just a quick announcement about going fine-free, just so that patrons are aware, two-ish weeks in advance, that they don't have to pay their current fines if they don't want to. Like, we don't want to suddenly just say like, "Oh, effective today," and then meanwhile, someone's just paid fines possibly the day before. So we've been, for the past couple of weeks, have not been pointing out fines to patrons. If they ask us, we've been telling them, we've tried to discourage payment, but some people still, you know, have paid it, of course, and that's fine, but well, at least that gives someone the option over the next couple of weeks whether or not they want to pay the existing fine or not, and then by the 21st, those existing fines will be wiped away. So the announcement does state that also, that existing fines will be wiped. So hopefully, that e-newsletter goes out tomorrow, and then they'll leave a Facebook post and an Instagram post over the weekend, hopefully. And then, next week, like I mentioned, the staff and I are having a meeting on Friday, and we're really gonna go through the whole thing together in one room versus me piecemeal telling people, this is what's happening. You know, when it's a big thing, it seems to happen, the communication is best when we're all together, which hardly ever happens, which is why we need to have a staff meeting for it. So we'll, I'll review an FAQ with them, and want them to see the FAQ before the public sees the FAQ, because even though I'll have a couple of them proofread it before I share it with anyone else, I still want the staff to have a handle on it before the public comes in and asks questions. So hopefully, by next Friday, we'll have the FAQ on our website, and we'll share it on social media also, so that'll be good. But we'll at least get that announcement out there tomorrow, which I'm really excited to do. As you know, I was at the Board of Selectmen's meeting this past Tuesday to make the announcement to them officially. Jen and I had sent a letter to them to announce it, but then they invited us to come to the meeting, so we were at, Jen was there too, we were there to officially announce it, and there was no questioning it, or pushback about it, or anything, so they were supportive of what's happening at the library, and that's great, so we appreciate.
They did, they did also mention that they were gonna put it up on the signs.
Yeah, I've tried to get in touch with someone about that certain thing, I haven't yet, so it's a nice idea, but I'm, we'll see if it happens.
Yeah, right? It was a good idea.
Yes.
Our electronic signs are on town.
Hamlin sign, you know, those signs need to stay up.
Oh, that is more.
Sure, that is a pressing thing for drivers to see. But hopefully, it does make it right there, so that'll be great. I had three interviews this week with candidates for the library tech one position that's been vacant. We had a fourth person who withdrew their application for personal reasons right before the interview, so unfortunately, we didn't get to meet with that person, but three came in, there were three very viable candidates, it's a very difficult decision that I'm really stewing over, but unfortunately, there's been so much else going on this week too, with trying to get fine-free going, that I've had to kind of put it to the back of my mind, and hopefully tomorrow, and sit down again, kind of figure out what the next steps to take will be. And like I mentioned, once I make a decision, then I'll notify the town administrator, who will review and approve, and then hopefully, I can make an offer. So I did let all of the candidates know that, you know, they probably wouldn't care for me for at least a week or two, and that the position wouldn't start until at least the first week of January, just to get us past the holidays also. So they all, they all know that. I wanted to point out a couple of things with the staff. The staff has been super, I mean, they're always super, but they've been extra super lately. Kimmy and Ellen completed the picture book evaluation project that they've been working on since the end of summer. That was also a cleanup project, where they literally cleaned the covers of all of our picture books, which is, you can imagine, get a little gritty, so they, sticky hands. So they cleaned those up, they evaluated them, they went through each one looking for tears on the pages, which Leslie was able to mend. Leslie's great about mending spot, book spines, so they all worked really well together to get that done, and it's, it's done, so that's great. And now they're moving on to juvenile fiction. And Leslie and I have still been working on evaluating the large print collection. We had a little snafu in that, and so it's not done yet, but hopefully by the end of this month, it'll be done. And Kate and Sandra just processed about 40 library card applications to go along with the first grade visit that I did yesterday at the elementary school, and met with the five first-grade classes, saw a lot of familiar faces. We, there's, yeah, five first-grade classes. We've already had, since yesterday that I know of, we've already had five kids come in to use their new library cards. There could have been more, because I wasn't here last night, so there could have been more, but we know of at least five that have come in to use their card, they were super excited. Everyone should have the chance to sit with first graders and just chat, because it's pretty, it's a nice break from all the other stuff. But Kate and Sandra did a great job of taking care of those applications for us, the teachers were great, first of all, about sending home the applications and collecting them, and then bringing them here, but they, they were great to help. And next week, hopefully, they'll help me again, we're gonna, I'm gonna meet with one third-grade class next week, and they're all applying for cards, or most of them are applying for cards too, so hopefully Kate and Sandra can help with that. And tomorrow, I'll be at the annual pajama read-a-thon at the elementary school for kindergarten students and their fifth-grade buddies, and that's tomorrow, Friday, December 9th, and I look forward to that annually, and I'm very happy that they include me every year. And then, not to forget, last but not least, Melissa's been, had done great work in the children's room, and has been coming up with some plans with Sandra for pro-winter-themed programs that will run from mid-December through February, and we'll have more information on those soon as well. And last but not least, in terms of the report, the friends held their wreath in greens sale this past weekend. It was very well-supported, I think they did a great job, and I'm, as far as I know, it was quite successful, so I'm sure we'll get a tally on that at some point soon. But we appreciate all of their hard work, I think they got together and gathered greens, and then they got together at someone's house to sort them, and it was, it was a lot of work, but I think they did a great job. And then, lastly, overall, the circulation report for November, which I gave you all today, I think I referred to it somewhere as October, but now it's November's circulation Really, I think everything's on the up and up, like, but the only thing that I, I'm really starting to pay some pretty close attention to is we definitely are continuing to have a noted in, decrease in DVD circulation from the children's room. And that kind of is, makes the children's room circulation look like it's, I mean, it is less than it was a year ago in total, but if you look at the book circulation, the book circulation is up by over 100, 100 books, but the DVD circulation is considerably down. So at some point, we're probably gonna do an evaluation of that and figure out if it, if it needs to be as large of a collection as it currently is, as streaming services have become more popular, you know, maybe we don't need to have the size that we have right now. We had been thinking that for a while too, with adult DVDs, but then that has gone back up, so, so who knows? And then in terms of programming, of course, we're seeing much higher numbers than we were a year ago, because we weren't really doing very much a year ago, because we were not using this community room yet for indoor programs. And for the, under the adult category, Sandra has brought back Tech Hour, which is, you know, she advertises when people can come in with their devices and learn how to use different library services, like the Libby app, or the Sales Mobile app, or Hoopla, but sometimes people have questions that are not at all library-related, and she tries her best to help with those as well. So those, the listing of those are on our website, they're on different days and times, which is why I don't have them to announce here, but the calendar on the website is always updated, and if people don't go online, they can always call us at 998-0270 to find out what's happening and what times they can come. And, you know, she also tries, I mean, we all do, try to help people with tech over the phone, but it can be really difficult to walk someone through something tech-wise when you can't see what they're looking at. And if you're a visual person like myself, it's not always easy to do it on the, over the phone. So the Tech Hours are great, and it's nice that those are back. That's another pre-COVID return. So other than that, unless, I think I've covered everything, unless you have any questions?
For me, that's, that's. Sounds like everyone's been very busy.
We have been, never a dull moment, at least not in my eyes. I don't know if everyone feels that way, but I think it's busy.
Very, very. I don't have any questions, does anyone else have anything?
The one here, where it says total non-resident circulation? Is that somebody coming here from those?
That's what that means, people coming here. Yep, so our total non-resident circulation for the month of November was 2069. So that's, that's not 2,000 people coming here, that's 2,069 items being checked out. Yep, so.
Right.
And then the top, the ones underneath are the top five communities, and New Bedford is always at the top, because, again, our proximity to that 02745 zip code, and we're just closer for some people than, than a New Bedford library is, just because of where we're situated. And that's, I mean, it is a high number, and that's why I always try to point that out when we're talking about state aid, that our state aid has seen such an increase since the relocation, because our non-resident circulation has seen such an increase since relocating, because it definitely wasn't 2,069 items when we were at the old library. Yeah, definitely not. So that's, that's why I always try to point that out, that the, that state aid has increased so much since relocating, in part because of the fact that our non-resident circulation has increased so much.
I think it's true, they just had three candidates for the position so quickly.
Yeah, it was actually, that was kind of a surprise to me, because I, we actually had five, and I only scheduled with four, because I had, I took some time off right after Thanksgiving, and I had forgotten to take the job down, so I had already scheduled two interviews, I only usually bring in two or three people tops, usually. And then I had two more applicants apply, because I had forgotten to take the job down from the site, so during that week that I was off, two more came through, and they were very strong candidates, so I said, "Well, we might as well bring them in." Yeah.
Can't hurt.
But yeah, to have three who are all really, it's gonna be a tough decision, and the fact that they're interested in an eight-hour position is also, you know, surprising. But again, though, I will point out, since, since you mentioned it, that two of them are library school students, so we know that that means that if I were to go with either of those candidates, that they would leave, most likely leave, or upon completion of their master's degree, when they could go somewhere else to get a full-time job, because that's what's happened when we've had other library school students. And professionally, I feel obligated to give experience to people who are library school students, because it is so important to get that hands-on experience while you're in school, that's what I had, and it was, that's, it makes a huge difference. But then, on the other hand, I know they're gonna go when they graduate, so, and then the, you know, the other person is semi-retired, so that's typically what's attracted to these part-time positions, or, you know, retirees, or semi-retired people, and library school students. But even, even that said, I mean, any one of them would be great, it's just not long-term, I'm sure, for any of them, so in two to three years, we'll be advertising that. Unless something crazy happens, and we start getting full-time positions. So hopefully, when we meet next, we will have a new staff.
Speaking of meeting next.
Yes.
Do you have any dates in mind, or do you wanna, wanna extend some later, or?
I had jotted down January 10th, which is a Tuesday, or January 24th, which is also a Tuesday, just as tentative options, but if neither of those work for you all, then I, you know, we can revisit that. I know it's hard, because we don't have two of you here today, so it's, if you'd rather me just send an email, I can certainly do that also.
Um, I think we, is, can everybody do the 10th, or is the 24th better?
I can do the 10th.
Either one.
10th, 10th. Why don't we schedule it for the 10th, and then we'll, and then in the event that, you know, there's a problem, we can always fall back on the 24th. How's that? Does that work for everybody?
Sounds good.
Okay, so it's gonna be 4 o'clock or 4:30?
4 o'clock, does that work? Okay, okay, 4 o'clock, so January 10th, Tuesday, January 10th, at 4 o'clock.
Awesome.
Perfect, all right. Okay, so, he has anything else?
I did just wanna say one more thing, is it's the end of the year, I just wanted to thank you all for bearing with me this year, I know I've had a couple of rough things, just because I'm, you know, you understand my concerns and some frustrations that I have about not being able to run. my concerns and some frustrations that I have about not being able to run the library in the way that I wish I could. But I appreciate all, you all for stepping up throughout the year and bearing with me and meeting like I think we met every month this year, which doesn't always happen. So I really appreciate that and just wanted to formally thank you all because you are here voluntarily. And that does mean a lot to me that you continue to show up and support your public library and the staff who work so hard here. So, and I don't mean me when I say that, I mean the staff, the other staff. So thank you very much for that and we all appreciate it. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to say Merry Christmas to everyone out there and Happy Holidays or whatever you celebrate. And hopefully we'll kick this off again next year.
That sounds good.